This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is the body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Mupper.
Here.
All members are present. We have three requests to amend the agenda. The first is to add a resolution declaring council support for issue six, proposed tax levy renewal for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. That would be under introductory readings of resolutions number two. The next is a communication from the liquor control board regarding Kroger. And I would move, suggest that we move that to communication number one. And then we have a letter from the mayor to, asking to go into executive session, that we would move to number, so, I'm sorry, then the letter from Chuck Barlow would be number two. The letter from the mayor going into executive session would be three. And the letter from Keith Moore regarding executive session would be number four. You have a letter on your desk that the mayor wanted to give an administrative report, and he asked that that be pulled. So if that's on your desk, we didn't forget it. He just asked that it be pulled. Mr. Mupper?
I move we amend the agenda as you so gracefully suggested.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to minutes of the previous meeting. We have two sets of minutes, one from the September 27th regular meeting and one from the October 5th special meeting. Mr. Clark?
I move that both sets of minutes be approved as of right.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no request to address council on agenda items nor reports of standing committees or ordinances. So we'll move on to introductory readings of ordinances. And that is an ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzal.
I move that we have the first reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Ordinance adopting a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency.
Move on to introductory readings of resolutions, and that is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Mr. Sankar.
Recommend we have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Mupper. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Sankar.
Recommend that the resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Mupper. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to resolution number two. A resolution declaring council support for issue six, a proposed tax levy renewal for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Stickley.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Mr. Mupper.
I'd like to have a first reading in its entirety if we could.
Mrs. Stickley, would you amend your motion to include that?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Clark, your second. So the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to have all three readings, the first in its entirety. Is there any discussion on that? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
Resolution declaring council support for issue six, proposed tax levy renewal for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Whereas on April 26, 2016, council for the city of Norwood voted unanimously to place a renewal of the current operating levy on the November 8, 2016 ballot. And whereas the levy is a renewal of the existing operating levy and not an increase or new levy. And whereas, council decided to place the issue on the ballot this year even though the levy does not expire until the end of 2017 in order to achieve a more stable basis on which to plan for the future. And whereas, the city's continuing status under fiscal watch and recent announcement of fiscal emergency status will require a formalized long-term financial plan. And whereas, passing the levy renewal now will be of great assistance in preparing long-term revenue projections and fiscal planning. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Norwood, state of Ohio. That's section one. The council of the city of Norwood hereby expresses its support for the passage of issue six, proposed tax levy renewal, on the November 8, 2016 ballot and being in the best interests of the city of Norwood and its residents. Section two, this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency resolution and a measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare and shall go into effect forthwith. The reason for said emergency is that voting begins October 12, 2016. Resolution declaring council support for issue six, proposed tax levy renewal for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Resolution declaring council support for issue six, proposed tax levy renewal for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
Need to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Mupper. Is there any discussion? I want to thank Mr. Mupper for asking this to be written tonight and the law department for doing it. It was, it's important, I think, and it's a renewal, so it won't raise your taxes and hopefully there'll be more about this in the coming weeks. Thank you, Mr. Mupper. I appreciate it. Motion on the floor is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports. We do have one request to address council, and that's Pastor Sonny James. Would you like to come forward with your guests and, you'll have five minutes. Give us your name and address.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue. I'm delighted to stand before council today. Several days ago, in Norwood, there were several families stricken by a horrendous fire. And it was horrendous. I've never seen such a fire. In fact, upon approaching the scene, the first thing I saw was one of our courageous firefighters literally falling off of a truck. One of our firefighters was sent to be checked for his medical concern for his heart, and thank God he made it and his family is okay. But we have some of the families today that was there. I've never seen a building just go up in all red like that. And our firefighters, which we have some of the firemen here today, we want to publicly say thank you for the courageous job that you did for these families, business owners, residents. And since then, through a partnership with Division of Marriott Hotels, we've been able to provide the families with king-size beds, lamps, pull-out sofas, pretty much giving them the things that they need along with Red Cross, helping somewhat. But just want to turn the mic over and let them just formally say thank you. And I just personally want to say, until you can see what happened to that magnitude, I never personally understood, I mean, I know fire departments are important, don't get me wrong, but I never knew the real importance. I didn't leave the scene that night until after 2:00 that morning. And to see those firefighters staying out there with the building engulfing three times after they had drenched it with water. And also, I want to give a shout out to our police department because they did an exemplary job. It could have been a volatile situation on the scene. The police showed a desire to work with clergy and residents on the scene that were able to help diffuse some of the angry folks that were there. And it was a wonderful display of how Norwood really does love each other and how we can work together. But I really want to just applaud the fire department because putting your life on the line is no easy job, and it's really priceless. You can't put a dollar figure on the value that they have. So I just want to extend, let them tell you who they are, any brief comments that they may have.
Joseph Kim, property owner. And yes, I definitely want to thank the firefighters. You know, they did a courageous job and truly put their lines, their lives on the line to protect the community here in Norwood. So many, many thanks.
Yes, my name is Martin Sebastian, and I said I agree with him. I appreciate the fire department and the police. And I said it could go wrong. It could, like you said, it could have gone wrong, and I was concerned about that. And it went on for about three hours, and I just appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. So again, thank you, Norwood. Again, we've had a flood, we've had a massive fire. I'm very, very grateful to the fire department. And I think as a city, we really need to get behind the job that they do. And I know sometimes there's budgetary issues, but when you see a building in flames and you see people jumping, trying to get out of third floor, floor up high, you know, no one here was there to jump in those buildings, but we had firefighters risking their lives. And like I said, I was one of the first on the scene, and I was the last to leave. And I'm very grateful to the police and the fire for what they did. It was absolutely amazing and nothing short of an effort that's worth the city of Norwood and our city folks to get behind our fire department and to rally with whatever it is that they need so they can continue to provide an exemplary service. Because without them responding the way they did, I can personally guarantee you, some of the folks, they weren't here tonight, we had some last-minute medical emergencies, but some of the folks who weren't here tonight, I promise you, if not for our Norwood Fire Department, they would not be alive to this day. And that's just the God's honest truth. So we rally around our firefighters, we thank God for our fire department, and finally, I just want to encourage the city, whenever it comes time to decide what's in the best interest of the city of Norwood. Until we get on the ladder and see fire face-to-face, there's no value, there's no limit on the value that they present to our city. So I just want to encourage us all as one big family. I applaud you guys because of the work you guys do. Thank you for extending some time. The families felt it was important. We did bring the families in and fed them a dinner with the firefighters present, just so that they can come together and begin to just mend together because that was a horrendous effort. We also have an opportunity that we're going to be presenting to the city to try to help our firefighters and police in times of stress, to be able to relax themselves because that is very, very intense. And to the neighbors that were there that kept calm, thank God for you. And let's keep Norwood safe, and let's keep pushing Norwood forward. God bless each and every one of you. We appreciate your time today. Be blessed.
Thank you, Pastor James. Thank you all for being here. I'm sure it means an awful lot to the firefighters. Thank you. Move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, just a note here. We have a letter that was sent from Hamlin County, recycling the solid waste. It was dated September 26th, of which, I won't read the whole letter, but basically what it is doing is presenting the city with funds of $8,481.65 as a rebate for our recycling efforts. And if we can just get 87 more tons of recycling material, it'd bump us up into the next bracket where we would have been another few thousand more. These funds are used for purchasing recycled picnic benches, playground equipment, lawn equipment for recycling, recycling mowers, things of that nature. So it's a, it's an easy thing to do, just use your recycling bin instead of throwing it out in the trash. And it accumulates quite a bit, and then the city gets a rebate a couple times a year from the amount that we recycle. So that just came through at the end of September.
Thank you, Mr. Sebastian. Any other new business? Moving on, we'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from the Ohio Liquor Control regarding Kroger.
Members of council, this is a letter from liquor control regarding Kroger seeking liquor control contract. Various departments were contacted and their responses are noted below. Respectfully submitted, Tim A. Brown, Secretary, Park of Council.
It's a pleasure. Mr. Mupper?
With the letter we received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan.
I have to say I'm listening to this. This is Kroger. Already, there are lots of issues with Kroger. We have lots of residents who want to shop there. They want to save their parking lot. I mean, all of them. I can't say the response personally here who hasn't. I think getting liquor is just getting through the fire, and I think we really need to look at it before we automatically save our money.
Any other discussion? Note that I believe this was from, yes, Mr. Sankar.
No, I just was noting, I mean, if we needed further discussion, our response has to be postmarked by the 20th of October. So if we have an objection to, an objection can come from anyone, it doesn't have to come from council as a whole body, but if there are some concerns, they, we need to respond to the liquor control board by the 20th of October. So I mean, if there are concerns, I mean, we can have a letter sent to them with the concerns. You know, obviously, you wouldn't have any problems, you know, with Kroger from fire building, I mean, because they have all, they pay their taxes and all that. But I'm not sure whether, whether they are looking to have a separate store inside the store. I would think they would have to, similar to some of their other operations.
My understanding is that this was from Donna's carryout because they're no longer permitted to sell liquor, and Kroger wants to purchase that license and have a state liquor store very similar to what is at Hyde Park.
Yeah.
So it would be a state liquor store. Mr. Sankar.
Yeah, just.
Is that correct, Mr.? Do you know anything about this?
Just, I mean, it is all, I mean, and I don't know whether that's a requirement that the state has, that it has to be in a separate area or a separate room or basically a separate shop so that minors aren't able to, because I know in some of the other stores, you have to be 21 just to enter into it, you know, in order to purchase. But I would, I would have to assume that that would be the case, and that they would have some way of controlling what's coming in and out of that particular, you know, liquor store there. But I would think if there's an objection or if there's a concern, we could have, you know, the clerk send a letter to the Ohio Liquor Board stating that, you know, the concerns that may be, you know, presented here. So I mean, that's, can be done, but it has to be done by the 20th, so.
Okay, also, that's pretty close to high school and the junior high, Kroger. So that, you know, those are just other concerns. Unfortunately, today, when I got this, I was, I was trying to get how many runs have been made to Kroger's by the police department, and I wasn't able to get that at this length before I was able to pick this up, so I don't have the information. Then I waited before I got here to speak about it.
Mr. Sankar.
Well, I would say that we, if, I mean, we could receive and file the letter, we're not necessarily giving approval, but then any objections, we could submit in writing and forward it to the liquor board by the 20th, so.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
So are we saying that we would, if an individual council member has, you know, has an objection, and I guess before I say that too, it does say here in the Ohio Revised Code that we can request a copy of the application and any supporting documents that Kroger has provided the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. So possibly, we could request those if somebody wants to review them outside of the meeting. But are we saying that we want to maybe ask TA, like, you know, send feedback to TA and have him send it to the, how would we get the feedback to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control before the 20th? Because basically, we're, we won't have a meeting before then.
You can fax it to them. You can fax this if you want to.
I guess what I'm asking is, how are we going to decide what we want to send to them if we're not going to decide it right now? And then who's going to do it? I just want to make sure that we kind of get that straightened out since we won't have a meeting before then.
Mr. Moore, do you know the conditions that we can, for which we can object to a license transfer? There, I think they're very specific, aren't they?
I don't remember off the top of it, and I've not seen this particular application as I recall. I mean, yeah, there are very limited grounds on which to formally object, request a hearing, and go through that. And is this the, I'm just wondering, does that form say, you know, we hereby object or we do not object? Does it have that kind of thing? Because if it does, then I think the council needs to object to the transfer. I'm glad we requested hearing.
Mr. Sankar.
Well, you know, on their form, I mean, if there's, if someone has objection to it, I mean, you can request a hearing in Columbus to discuss the viability of the transfer and if there are some concerns. If they grant a hearing up there, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, but you can request a hearing in Columbus of which, you know, concerns could be expressed there as well. But that's also has to be postmarked by the 20th.
And you can request it in the county seat, but it rarely happens.
Correct.
Rarely happens. It's usually in Columbus. And that would require the law department or representative or somebody to go up. Mr. Mupper, did you have a comment? I'm sorry. Okay. So right now, the motion on the floor is to just receive and file the letter. So Mr. Mupper had that motion, and Mr. Blair seconded it. Mrs. Hanahan.
I'm not sure what to ask for here. I'd like to get the other opinions, the opinion of the other people in council on how, or if you could tell me to process now.
The process?
Or what we should be doing, what's the motion I should be putting up?
If you want to have him amend the motion, if you want to object to it, then you would ask him to amend his motion and say that we object to it, or.
Okay.
Or if he doesn't accept your amendment, then we would vote on his motion to receive and file. If that passes, we're done. If it fails, then we can have a second motion. Mr. Sankar.
By reading through it and from past experience, I mean, if, pretty much so if you do nothing, then it'll be assumed that.
It goes through.
That it goes through. So if you request a hearing, then that way, at least, you know, it may still go through because the liquor control board actually has the final say. Even if we went up to a hearing, as we've done before, you know, you can at least go up and let the liquor control board know your concerns or the community concerns before they actually vote or issue the transfer. So I mean, if, that would be something, not to ramble on, but would be, you know, we could receive and file a letter and request a hearing, you know, at least.
He'd have to amend, agree to amend the motion, so.
But I mean, in the event that, you know, we would want to have a hearing up there to discuss or to let them know the concerns.
So we are still here. Any other discussion? Does anybody else have anything before we?
May I, Mr.?
Mrs. Hanahan.
Mr. Moore, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President. I think Mr. Moore would like to say something on this. Maybe he can explain.
Well, thank you, Madam President. The, and council member, Hanahan. I, here's the thing, is that we can file, we can ask for a hearing, but we need to have real grounds. I mean, and this is not a business owner. There are sometimes, as a business owner, they're running a, you know, a place, they're a shady operation, they've been convicted of a crime in the past, in which case they're not, it's that kind of thing where there's grounds for the transfer of a liquor license. This is Kroger, and so if we're going to request a hearing, then I would really like to have something to present at the hearing, some valid ground. Because if there's really nothing, like, well, I don't know, some people are, there's panhandlers outside sometimes, it's not going to be, I can't see driving up to Columbus and going to the trouble of actually making, trying to make a case that they shouldn't be allowed a liquor license. So that would be my concern, is that there'd be something serious, concrete, that at least we can say as a community, this is going to be a horrible thing even if it's not technically one of the requirements. In this, I'm not sure exactly what. I mean, I kind of understand, oh, there may be some concerns that it's, you know, they're vague, and I need something more concrete before we're going to, my office is going to proceed to go up to Columbus and, you know, kind of waste everybody's time with, hi, we're here, I didn't bring any witnesses because nobody's really got anything to testify to as a real issue. And so that's kind of my concern.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Back in the 90s, I know that a liquor store, a state liquor store, wanted to go in the corner of Monroe and Montgomery Road during the hot fire administration, I believe it was. And people were opposed to that, and it got stopped. I just, you know, this came, I got, unfortunately, I got this later in the afternoon, and I just was uncomfortable with it, just having a couple hours to look at it and not getting the information I needed before going forward.
And I think that what we have objected to in the past were when folks didn't pay their income tax. That's, or if there were health issues or things like that, which is why when these come in automatically, our clerk of council sends them to the six departments that are listed here, and they do the background check. And usually, it's that, one of those six departments who will raise an objection that says if the police department had an inordinate number of runs. the police department had an inordinate number of runs, they could be the ones who say, "We've had a lot of runs there," or if the tax department said they hadn't paid their taxes. We have objected to those in the past, and those are usually the reasons why we objected, and that's why it gets sent to these six departments, just as a matter of history. So it's totally up to you all. So we are still at the point where the motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter, which would mean we would not object. So if there's any other discussion, or any other action you want to take before we act on that motion. Mrs. Hanahan?
I would like to ask Mr. Mupper to remove his stuff.
Sure.
You're going to remove your motion?
Yeah, my motion.
And Mr. Blair, will you rescind your motion? Okay. We are now... We have read the letter. We need an action.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes. I would like to pose a motion to... Do what you said before.
To object to the transfer and to request a hearing?
Yes.
I don't want to put words in your mouth. I just want to make sure that...
This is all I really want, is time to look into this. This is all I'm really looking for, is time to look into it, so I'm not sure exactly how to do it.
That would be a way. Object to the transfer and request a hearing. Is there a second?
Just...
Mr. Sankar? I'm sorry.
Make it a second. No, it's not time for comment yet.
Please?
I'm just going to make a comment, but it's not at that time. Sorry.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion, just so that we can discuss it, so...
All right. The motion on the floor, that is, to object to the transfer and request a hearing. Discussion. Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President. If we... If you do nothing, the transfer goes through.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Now, we can say we're objecting to it, but we truly aren't, because there's really not anything on here that says where you have... You're objecting to it, however, you're requesting a hearing. So the long and short of it would be that you... We would receive and file... I'm just kind of talking. Receive and file a letter and request a hearing, either in our county seat or in Columbus. That way, it would give you... We'd be under the deadline. We could request a hearing, give you time to look into it, and if you truly don't find anything objectionable, then we would just send a letter to them and say, "We've withdrawn our request for a hearing. We're not going to be there," and it would just go ahead as planned. But if, you know, if you do find, you know, some reasons for objection, then, you know, then the trip to Columbus could possibly happen. Typically, when we've done this in the past, it's been... It's centered around an establishment, local pub, or drive-through, or pony keg, where they actually were causing the problem, or the concerns in the neighborhood were with that, you know, specific establishment, and that the problems associated with that establishment drew the concern and the request for hearings, you know, with the Liquor Control Board, as far as to either renew their license, which comes up every so often, or to transfer it to a new owner of that same facility. So this one is a little different in the fact that it's being bought by another, actually corporation, which is Kroger, which would be moving the license to a completely different location, not knowing when it would even be utilized. So it's a little bit different circumstance than when you're objecting to an establishment that has a track record of possibly not paying taxes, or health issues, or things of that nature, so... One other comment?
Go ahead.
I don't know... The mayor, do you have anything you want to say on that, or...
Yeah, I hate to be the one to do this. What you're discussing, your concerns are all legitimate. Here's the fact. There's no chance. This... I understand you want the more information. There's no stand, this will be stopped. I mean, I remember times when we took a bar, the third conviction for trafficking in cocaine, we finally got their license. We've had multiple cases where shots fired, people shot, you know. Well, the Liquor Control Board told us one time, "These liquor holders are our customers, so we don't want to put our customers out of business." So what they would do is, they would fine them, rather than close them up, they would fine them, they would generate funds that way. So your concerns are absolutely legitimate, but to expect the Liquor Control Board in the state of Ohio to block Krogers from getting a liquor license is slim and none. But I understand you want to get more information on it. You know, if you want to... This one is not that complicated. You know Donna's was... Had their circumstances. You know the corporate is Kroger's, is corporation. This is not a limited liability corporation that's put together, you know, to buy a corner bar. So this is basically an open and shut case. I guarantee you, there's slim and none chance. This will not stop. Krogers will get that license. And right, wrong, or indifferent, that's the fact of life. I'm sorry to be the one to say that. Nobody else would, but I'll say it.
Mrs. Hanahan? Mr. Bonzo, you'll withdraw your second?
Yes.
Mr. Mupper?
Can we receive and file a letter?
Seconded by Mr. Blair. We're back to our original motion. Is there any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Chuck Barlow regarding earnings tax report.
To Norwood City Council, a tax is a monthly report for September 2016, indicating collections in the amount of $1,364,581.91. This reflects an average year-to-date increase of 3.53% from 2015. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner.
Mr. Blair?
Our motion, we receive and file a letter.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the next two letters. I would suggest that we read them both, and we can make motions on both of them together.
Dear Madam President, members of council, I am requesting that council go into executive session on Tuesday, October 11, 2016, to discuss civil actions. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood. Dear Norwood City Council, I would like to ask council to enter executive session to discuss pending and imminent litigation at the next council meeting, October 11, 2016. I hope this email will suffice. Thanks. Keith D. Moore, Norwood Law Director.
Mr. Mupper?
I move that both these letters be received and filed, and that we move into executive session to discuss civil actions and pending and imminent litigation.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will now move into executive session, so we'll ask all those who are in the audience to leave, with the exception of city officials, Mr. Barlow, and Mr. Maloney, and Mr. Derry. We will come back into regular session, but the only purpose that we will have when we come back into session is to adjourn. We are not permitted to have any other... There are no other items on our agenda. If you'll turn off the television and the microphones.